We've got six in our, we're starting up. First thing is the pledge of allegiance flag on your left. Pledge of allegiance to the God, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. This is six, one nation, and one nation's love, and the religion of Christ is our law. Okay, just so you know, this meeting is being started, and if you are recording it, please give us notification of that. Dr. Ben?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. For the purposes of interpreters, we've been asked when speaking, particularly during voting, to please take off your masks so that the deaf and hard-earner community can actually hear us. Thank you.
Okay, first up on the agenda, we go the vote to approve the minutes of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty one open session meeting. Does anyone have a chance to the debarred minutes?
Yes.
Does anyone have any objections to the questions? No. Seeing objections, corrections, or any change to approve the minutes of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty one open session meeting? So, set it. All those in the banner, are there some appointments you have right now?
Oh, yes, you still have a vote.
Oh, okay. Uh, Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Shady?
Yes.
And Mr. Sabas?
Yes.
Next up is our lance.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants, which then must be put into public grant third, October twenty first, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nine cents. Also, October twenty first, payroll of one million, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you very much. Number, number three on the agenda is the student representative updates. Can we use only, do we have any guys?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, okay, so this week we want to do more of like a Halloween, kind of like fun update, because we've done a lot of-
No, I'm gonna interrupt people one second. Karen, can we get that turned up a little bit? Can we turn it up? So, can you turn your mic up? I don't think I can.
Uh, I don't think I can. Yeah, no, we don't have that on Chromebooks, but-
You're gonna try it, you probably can.
Is it okay? I can just, I'll turn it louder. Sorry about that. Um, okay, so I'm gonna start with the L N M. Uh, they're celebrating Halloween several years, several ways this year. Uh, students and staff can wear costumes tomorrow, which is Friday the twenty-ninth. Classes are doing fun curriculum activities that are aligned with the, with standards, but with a Halloween twist, uh, such as pumpkin math, estimation, weighing, measuring, and decorating for, um, grades K through three. Uh, many Halloween fall stories are being read aloud with prompts and other activities for writing. Science lessons on Halloween topics such as learning about bats and the human skeleton are also being taught. And Zoe's gonna go to the end.
Um, so at the Yale, they've had many Halloween themed activities too. Um, they've done science experiments with spooky ones, writing activities with the Halloween theme, as well as many math and readings around Halloween. This Friday, so tomorrow, they're going to wear costumes, faculty and staff and students. Um, and on Friday evening, they have their Hey PTO shrivel tree, event from six to seven thirty-five, and they usually do a quick abattoir, so it should be really fun. Both will have, they're gonna be participating in the Charlie Bean Parade, also through the PTO, and overall, students are really excited for the holiday with everything that they've been doing these past few weeks. I'm gonna move right into the high school. Um, high school, it's ready for the big competition between departments. Uh, the department's dressing up, and then the students voting on which department wins. Ever since my freshman year, the English department has won every year, so the history department has actually been trying to bribe the kids to try to vote for them this year. Um, they even put up a sign already saying, "Vote for the history department." So, everyone's super excited to see what they're gonna do, but it seems as though that the art department might even have a running this year. They have some pretty good ideas, so we're pretty excited to see how that goes, but let us know a little bit more about what the students are doing.
Yeah, um, keep the history department in your thoughts and prayers. They've been fighting for a long time. But, um, so the students are gonna be doing a kind of a similar thing with the costume contest. Um, they're going to be, basically, I think what we're doing this year, like, Zoe can correct me, but we're kind of having a similar thing to the teachers where we have a Google, a Google form with pictures of the students who are running for the costume contest and like what they're dressed as. So, basically, everyone will be able to vote on their favorite costume regardless of like whether they know the person or if they've even seen them that day. So, it should be fun, and I think, I don't know what the reward is for that. Is it just like for fun, Zoe?
Um, I think it's usually like a Dunkin' gift card or something, something of that sort.
I'm pretty sure it's like a Dunkin' or a home plate gift card, but either way, it's gonna be fun. So, I think that's pretty much it for the high school. I think we do the costume contests and, you know, everyone dresses up. It's fun, you know, I've missed it, so it'll be fun, but-
Yeah, definitely check out the Twitter pictures, because it's definitely gonna be interesting.
Yeah, I think that's it for us, though, if you guys are all set.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, okay, next in my discretion, I'm gonna change the agenda tonight. I'm gonna move number six, uh, off the order to right now, that's the Women Teachers Association and mask policy. Ms. Taylor, you're here.
Ms. Wobbs is gonna be with me, if that's okay?
Yeah. Are you sure?
Um, alright. Thank you guys for providing us the opportunity to speak tonight. Since this was on the agenda for the fourteenth meeting, B N T members felt left out of this important dialogue as we were still negotiating through our Joint Labor Management Committee over this change. If we had been insulted about the start date, we would have communicated our concerns more promptly. N T A members were present remotely, but were not recognized to speak. Since many members of the J C S community were mourning, we were not able to be present at the last meeting, but we communicated that we would be prepared to speak tonight at this meeting. As we heard there were frustrations about the length of negotiations and what the impact of this decision would be on working and learning conditions, we wanted to have an open and honest dialogue with you. The health and safety of our students and their families is a top priority of the N T Association. N T A members have worked tirelessly to provide the best possible education while taking prudent, scientifically supported, and medically endorsed steps to prevent COVID-19. Since one risk mitigation was removed, we needed to ensure that other mitigation strategies recommended by the C D C, the A A P, the Harvard School of Public Health, E E C, and DESI were in place. Uh, we worked with Les Wazat, our facilities director regarding, um, air quality and air exchange rates. In this process, we found that some of our systems were not functioning properly, but these issues have been addressed. We've added air purifiers to every room where pre-K students would be in, to can ninety-five masks are available to any staff member. We've increased clean protocols as well. We are still working on creating outdoor learning spaces, clarifying testing requirements and protocols through the Department of Health and DESI, and other concerns with classroom management. We are anticipating that there may be unforeseen challenges as well that we'll continue to address through our DL and C, which I know you guys know we use that process since March or April, we started in April two thousand twenty with that process, and it's been really, um, beneficial for us. Um, as we were reviewing what mitigations need to be implemented, we met with the pre-K staff several times to understand their questions and, and get their answers. I know that there have been, like, this topic has been discussed before, but myself as president of the association, I can't speak on those topics unless I'm able to meet with them, so that's what we were did. Um, and the pre-K staff felt they wanted to have their collective voices heard, so anywhere, whoever is that would be best seen right now. To the Norton School community, we, the staff of the Little Lancers preschool program, have concerns with the decision to change the masking policy for only the preschool students from a mandate to a masking optional. We have not been provided the opportunity to express those concerns in an open forum since the decision was made, so we want you to be aware of how this decision will impact the preschool environment, students' social, emotional well-being, and their learning. This year, students are wearing masks, and the entire district has been able to return to some sense of normalcy. Since the start of the school year, we have been grateful for the opportunity to return to best practices for our students. Having our students mask has allowed them to once again engage in enriching learning and cooperative activities. Students have enjoyed working, learning, and playing together while remaining safe. Unmasking students is a change to the working and learning environment. Masking has been one consistent mitigation that we have used in this district since the start of the two thousand twenty-one school year. It has been supported by our sixth school nurses and district pediatrician. Since this mitigation strategy will be removed, we need to ensure that other mitigations are in place for the health and safety of our students. Following the guidelines put forth by the experts at C D C and A A P, this change will inhibit, rather than promote, what we know are the best teaching practices for students in preschool. To be clear, we do not want to physically distance our students, but it is, but it is our responsibility to keep all students safe in school, especially those who are at a higher risk. Our students cannot be vaccinated. This mitigation strategy, which will be an option for older students, will not be afforded to ours. This is why we feel so strongly about continuing masking for our students, a sentiment shared by our colleagues and other preschool programs in town. While the health of the community remains a prominent concern, the overall welfare of students must also be considered. We must ask, what is best for all students? With the continued masking mandate, we will be able to keep a consistent educational experience for the students. When students turn five, they will be required to wear a mask again. This will be another change for students to manage. Also, we want to prevent more widespread contact tracing and quarantining, as we know the requirements for testing and quarantining are different when students are wearing masks versus when they are not. We want our students in school every day. We consistently emphasize the importance of our students' social and emotional well-being. What impact will this change have on them, and why change what has been working so well for us to start this year? Thank you, the Little Lancers preschool program staff and N T A executive board. What I, what I think is so special about Norton is the relationship still, and, um, we understand that there is work to be done, and it's always in the past. We hope this process will be open and honest. We truly value and take pride in the fact that we do have a great working relationship with administration and school committee, and even though we disagree on this topic, we are committed to continue to bargain with you in good faith moving forward. There are so many exciting things that are happening here in Norton, and it's because, and these things aren't able to happen in other districts, right? We've talked about that a lot. There's something about what we are able to do here that, that has been amazing. Um, and we've, we've spent a lot of time on these things and building these positive relationships, and we want you to know that this, that's not going away. Like, that for us, we know that that's there, but we just wanted to have a chance to be able to get everybody together, have our collective voices heard, and, and, and just that understanding that we didn't feel that, that we're able to comment about this last week, or not last week, I apologize, on the fourteenth, due to the state that, um, our community was in at that time. Um, so I apologize if it felt as though that was not the case for us. This is, I'm very passionate about how much I, I, I am proud to be a leader here in Norton, and it is because of what we're able to do. So, I truly appreciate you guys having us on the agenda tonight and hearing us. Um, and, and again, we know that there, not everyone feels the same way, and, and that's okay. We just wanted to be able to have our voices heard. So, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Mr. Sack, you're in. Rest in peace, Mr. Sack.
Uh, Nick, help to put your voice straighten a little. Um, I just wanna kind of clarify a few points here. Norton doesn't parent against teachers, doesn't parent against school community, because he doesn't school community against teachers. Um, I think you know, I have probably been educated behind, with some teachers behind me. I graduated from what I have. I know kind of how this community works. I know what the people, and the people behind me put into what they're doing. Um, ultimately, though, I do want to clarify some points, because I'm giving some support to them for the public to hear and make sure that it is on record. The North School Committee has been from September eighth, two thousand twenty-one. That was for any parent, uh, any student, I would assume, uh, any taxpayer, citizen, teacher in the town we wanted to come to. It was an open forum, held to discuss what was going on with the masking in, in the North Public Schools. Uh, I know for a fact, there was teachers there, I know a member in person, Ms. Taylor was also, was also there. I believe two teachers spoke at that meeting. But again, on nine, uh, September ninth, two thousand twenty-one, a similar group of teachers was present again, including a member in person. Their voices have never been silent. Um, and I truly believe the school committee gave the ample opportunity for all teachers and all taxpayer citizens of the town, uh, ample opportunity to speak on this topic. At that meeting on the two, uh, not, sorry, nine-nine, uh, the school committee actually voted in favor to move the Little Lancers mask, uh, from required or mandated to parental choice. Um, that masking policy had been debated for reasons mostly known to the public, however, we haven't heard from Superintendent Baena and Chairman Sabas, uh, that they need to negotiate with the U T A. I'm gonna make it very clear, Karen. Hocking in the high school is just football. Few weeks ago, just played in three to two, school community runs two unmasked children, uh, in the high school because they only have a vaccination rate. The, uh, the Teachers Association also, you know, braid death, complain about whatever the case may be, put this statement coming forward. Basically, it's a, you know, same idea. They were allowed, they don't think it's the right time, so on and so forth. Uh, but Hocking was in the school committee, and Hocking and Superintendent said is, "This isn't your business." And what I mean by that, I don't mean you're gonna come to someone in a wrong way. It's an educational policy. They didn't negotiate with the teachers union. You guys did. Dr. Baena did. Norton has gone above and beyond for these teachers to have their voices heard. Other districts have. I'm completely agree with Ms. Taylor in terms of what Norton has. Norton has something very special, because we have great teachers, we have great parents, we have great leaders in the community, that makes this community, you know, function, and make these schools better than others there, which is exactly what we're trying to do. Uh, there was also a new school committee on the twenty-fifth, which the teachers couldn't publicly, you know, bend that and then hurt that, and then ultimately on October fourteenth, uh, you know, Mr. Sabas, you know, kind of put the, put the pressure on and said, hey, we're making this policy effective October twenty-fifth. So, I just want to make it very clear. The teachers had, the teachers had a chance, uh, the public had a chance. Anyone who had any say in what was happening here had a chance to have their opinions heard. Truly, I really do, I'm a parent in Norton, uh, I have a big family in Norton, I appreciate what these teachers do. Um, you know, I have two children in the North Public Schools, and I have a third child. Um, you know, so again, I don't want to make this into a big thing, but again, it does need to be stated that what the school committee did is exactly what they were supposed to do. Uh, the school committee has been outstanding. You know, I have my differences, and obviously I wanted to be real quicker, uh, but again, they don't, we asked, uh, they are an extension of the taxpayers, they're not an extension of the Teachers Association. So, I thank you guys, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, at this point, um, you know, in my seat, I'm a little involved with the business of educating kids. The people who come with me are welcome over arms, or you can continue to admire in this, in this debate. I don't know why we're doing this week, because I'm also at this point. I think, quite honestly, we've, we've made a decision. Uh, we made it based on what we thought was a, a sound, logical judgment, and that is gonna be for us handling this debate. So, we are now over the top. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. We're not gonna have comments for the channel today. Sorry, that's it. We're not, guys. It's our policy, it's, it's policy, and, and my discretion is chair. I think we're, we're, we're done with this debate. It's, we're moving forward, that's it, so. Alright, next up, we have digital learning specialist, uh, Karen, sorry.
Hi, everyone. This is gonna be weird, I might have to move.
I'm doing the room.
I am. So, I am in the room. I'm, I'm monitoring the tech piece, right? So, I am going to, uh, share my screen and do a, a brief update about our new digital learning specialist that we have in the district. Um, we were very fortunate with all the kind of craziness of the last two years, um, to have the support of the school committee to get, uh, staff to support our teachers with technology. So, let me share this. Alright. So, when we hired, uh, the digital learning specialist, there was a true purpose to their role. Um, when I came to Norton, it was a position that I felt was critical, um, to support our teachers with technology in the classroom, and over this past eighteen months, we've never had more technology available. So, one of the things, um, was to be able to have staff dedicated to working with teachers. So, this purpose here is just what we used to post for the position. Um, we are very fortunate that Christina Chalongo worked in this role last year. Uh, she's a veteran Norton educator who moved from the middle school classroom into the digital learning specialist role, and this year, we hired Ryan Robidoux, who is a veteran, um, high school teacher, and they are a fantastic team. Um, none of them could be here tonight, um, due to some other circumstances, but they would love to come and speak with you towards maybe the end of the year, um, just to give you an update on the exciting coaching that's happening in the district. So, last year, oh my goodness, it was really, uh, just in time to tech support. Christina and I and, and our entire team really just tried to help teachers kind of navigate the year with, whether it be virtual drop-in training sessions, we, you know, did a lot of creating of websites and resources for teachers, providing this, what we call the white bite news matter. It was really survival mode. Um, whereas this year, I think everybody is overwhelmed, as some people might feel, being, uh, back in the school year, I think we're more in like expansion mode. We're willing to take a look at all of the tools and resources that we have and the students, and maybe see how we can manage it better with the support of the digital learning specialist, really true integration. One of the things we're most excited about is the pre-approved, um, coaching goals that they have, um, developed this year with the principals. Um, with General Roon, we developed these goals for teachers, and when we call them pre-approved, all teachers are required to, um, as well as administrators, come up with goals for the year, and, uh, digital learning specialists are really gonna be supporting, um, our teachers to, to meet these goals. So, I wanted to just, you know, include these goals in the, uh, presentation. But one of the things that we wanted to be clear about was the actual coaching cycle and what that looked like, you know, setting goals, designing a plan for the teachers, and then implementing and reflecting on that plan. So, both, uh, Ryan and Christina will be working with a ton of teachers this year. I wanna say, um, whether it be the student learning goal about project-based learning or S E O, um, but also, if you notice here, we have a hundred and nineteen teachers with sixty-five different goals. Uh, that's pretty great. This particular, um, graph right here just shows you the percentage, um, of goals by school. So, we're really excited that there's a, a nice kind of distribution. We have a lot of high school, middle school staff, as well as J C S, so super excited. Now, they're not just working with the teachers on the goals this year, they're also gonna be working with teachers who might need support, um, you know, just for like a one-and-done kind of activity or a project. We're not forgetting those teachers, uh, who didn't sign up for, for their pre-approved goals, but we wanted to make sure that, um, having the opportunity to really be dedicated to, this is the goal that I want to achieve this year, um, with my students and getting in the classroom. They're spending a lot of time meeting with teachers, setting up, um, face-to-face and virtual meetings, and getting, you know, prepared for what the year ahead looks like. These are not all happening at the same time, fortunately. Um, they're spread out throughout the course of the year, but teachers have a, a cycle that they have to meet their goals, and it's really exciting. I think we're gonna see a lot of, um, exciting innovative technologies by our students and staff. Um, so moving forward, we're gonna look at building on the successes that we have, um, the relationships that are made, kind of reflecting on the practices, what's working, what's not working. Obviously, we wanna encourage innovation. You know, Ryan, uh, we were talking today about, uh, computer science week, um, kind of coding coming up in December, and he's got some great ideas about that. Um, so we wanna encourage teachers to take more risks, and I think both just Christina and Ryan's personalities and their, their teamwork is really gonna shine this year to be able to support with our, um, actually all of our students and staff. So, we're really excited, and that is my update. So, how many questions?
Any other questions? Most of you, hi, nice.
Uh, I just wanna say thank you, Karen, because if it wasn't for you spearheading everything from the very beginning, our kids would not have been one-on-one, uh, when the world shut down. And I think that's, that's commendable to you, especially where other districts were scrambling, trying to get the technology and the, the pieces in play that we already had. So, we were already well ahead of the game, and I appreciate you and your team, because without that, it wouldn't have happened. So, thank you.
Thank you, because with your, and obviously, our entire team, we are very, very fortunate. Um, my technology team is amazing, um, but the whole administrative team really is on board with us. Um, I think looking at the digital learning specialist position this year, people are getting it, like, understanding the true need for, um, people to take that one-on-one support, and, and you all in the school committee have just been tremendous supporters of technology, so thanks.
Well, but, but a quick announcement to, uh, to point, Mrs. Stern, for saying, uh, our faster to that, it was the teachers who adopted, so won't get easily when the world shuts down. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think it's really important just for the public and since we have a lot of staff and folks from outside here tonight, that these positions came about through your process of utilizing student choice funds to make sure that we were able to start this, and that's important because, um, you know, kind of position in the operational budget to do this and then you should perform what we did if we took direction from Karen, on my staff as well, and then to do, um, year one, year two, and then, um, year three. It would be the operating budget as we did with full day day, as we've done curriculum purchases and all of that, but that's how the, um, this came about, which would be one hundred and sixty-eight students, that's right here, bringing in a lot of million dollars a year. Thank you. And thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much, and I will again, not much, what you're saying, and I don't know what to record when I say this, but that money plus is not extra money, it actually ended up covering some serious short balls and pledges in past years. So, what people think about that, I, I resent not to think about it, like, it's bound money, which is a phrase that you're so often, right, free cash, bound money, nothing's wrong. It's not my background, it's not my box, it doesn't work that way. Uh, it, it, it saved jobs, it saved, uh, it saved our education system. So, it goes to you for recommending that in the first place, so, thank you.
Any other questions on the, uh, field order? Okay, um, we are going to mount a discussion and vote. Are we, are we doing a summary of this with each side?
This is up to you guys. So, so-
Do you know how you want to get them?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two different ways of doing the, the resolution. Typically, the committee will vote on each of Massachusetts, uh, Association's resolutions at their conference, which is this year held, um, physically at, at a place like it's been in the past, but only a certain number of folks were allowed in, and then they went to virtual. During one of the three days, there's an actual resolution vote that takes place. There's a resolution that comes up, it's explained by the, uh, the maker of the, of the resolution. A discussion takes place, a vote takes place, and they do that for five or nine or ten sometimes, they hold them out till like you would do. Um, this year, it's nine.
And that was on Saturday.
Yeah, and that's on Saturday. The other way to do it is you can not vote on it, but give consensus to the stern, whether it's gonna be you're right, and that consensus may be, um, that you're voting to support her, support for these, or there's one that you really wanna discuss, and you're really, as a committee, you don't have a fanfare on the other eight or so on and so. So, you have options.
Okay, I'll be to deal with this.
So, in reading this, there's, there's probably only one that I would, um, consider really having a, a dog in the fight, as they say, which is Resolution Six, the alternative to MCAS. Um, I'm not a huge fan of MCAS, I don't like it. Um, I didn't test well when I was a kid, so it's kind of personal as well. I would be in favor of Resolution Six, uh, to looking, so the resolution is finding an alternative to MCAS, I would absolutely support trying to find something other than MCAS.
So, the resolution as voted would be that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee is called upon to legislation to establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students to demonstrate academic achievement which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students and accountability standards for Massachusetts.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that myself. So, I, as you know, I totally believe that that's a very good vote to be decided to support it, but this is not the first time that we're, that we're gonna set up a commission on MCAS, right? We've commissioned ourselves, and nothing happens. It's, I mean, we just didn't do it during the pandemic. We had to take a test then, instead of doing what we wanted to do with kids, and what we need to do, we all find out that kids didn't do well. Well, I didn't have to have my students take a test to figure that out, right? Because the fact of the matter was, we knew that we weren't having our education system doing what we normally do, our training. Um, and it's not diagnostic, I'll challenge that forever, um, how it's a diagnostic test to figure out what students have. So, I think it's important to, to, to support, to support it, but I'm concerned that it's once again, that kind of ring around the rosie that M A S C is, is doing.
Well, I, I will agree with that, because this will be my fifth conference. It would be my sixth if it wasn't for them canceling during the pandemic. Um, so far, we have voted that, uh, teachers would not have to take M T Ls anymore. Still taking M T Ls, as far as I know. Um, we have voted on M C A S-
Still taking MTEls, as far as I know. Um, we have voted on MCAS situations before. It's still out there. So, I mean, I guess we just keep voting and sending it to the legislation. Maybe someday something will stick, but.
There are bills this year with the legislature, just to let you know, there are four hundred and forty education bills. There are four hundred and forty education bills and there's about sixty of them on MCAS. Now, what happens to them, that's a whole other thing, but there are more this year than ever before, uh, including, um, a representative from Ann Arbor, who is one of the lead legislators on.
Jim Hawkins.
Yes, Representative Hawkins, um, who I used to work with, um, who has, um, less filed legislation that's getting some flavor. So it doesn't hurt for you to vote for it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, Joe, you can say, uh, a lot of those issues, they're going to cost you a smart time. And, and I thought that's for the years I'd be chucked by.
I was about to say, that's not a time.
Waste my time. Waste my time. Waste this time. Waste this too. Stop. Uh, but at the same time, uh, it probably is worth, however, I always heard. That being said, I think to, to Catherine's point, Joe, your point, um, you know, some of these resolutions, looking to them, there are costs still to the state. Again, to you, those won't pass, um, sadly. We may pass them, but the state is not going to pay for anything. I think that's.
I believe last year there was some, uh, one about had to do with disposable trays or something for lunches because, I, I know you said that.
I'll just show you what the process says. Forty billion? Fuck, yeah, good luck. That's not going to happen. And so, so it's, just speaking personally, I mean, I haven't been to a venue or conference, but I've been here as you've attended. And at some point, it's just words.
Right.
And there needs to be a legislature representative, somebody steps up or there needs to be a committee to put pressure on the legislature because, quite frankly, some of these, they're going to dictate to us as the local districts and then they'll say, do it, do it, do it, no money. And that's frankly what I'm quite tired of.
Right.
And that's what's hard, too, because they say, oh, yeah, that's a great idea. And then you pay for it. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm tired of. And, and a lot of these, again, I, I don't have kids in recess age, um, you know, I'll, I'll reserve my opinion on, on the Native American mascots. Um, but I mean, this is just words. Like, it's frustrating as a local board that we take direction from people that just like to talk. And that's the problem I always have with these resolutions. I think one year we went, went an hour or two on a meeting because it was a really good resolution and here we are again.
Well, I'll tie this meeting. So it's nine resolutions. If anybody wants to see it, I have three copies. Put it at each school, whatever. Um, this, this meeting will, with, from my experience with nine resolutions, it'll be at least two and a half hours, if not three.
Which is ridiculous, Christina. All right. So how do we want to proceed on it? We can, we can vote on it. Sorry. We can, uh, we can vote on it. We can.
I think in the past, we actually individually would spend Kathleen our kind of, um, lot and.
What I'm asking is, do we want to send a message and, and say we resolved, we reserve our vote because we don't believe that this is an effective method? Do we want to?
Let's say three hours under my Saturday.
Well, I, I, I just don't see a huge way for it. I mean, yeah, good ideas on paper, but it's frankly not what the paper's written on. I, I, I'm going to be honest with you. I, because I don't, I don't know. And I, so we've been doing this collectively for about a dozen years. I don't think we've ever seen a resolution come out of this conference and it been, been enacted. Right. And, and I, I've, I can, you know, see it best as well. So, um. Well, I was a school committee member from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and four. I'm still waiting for it, which is actually right. So I don't know. I mean, it, it works like MCAS itself, but we're just wasting our time.
I think you'd be better off, Mr. Chairman, um, on issues that are key to the North Public Schools and North community to, by, by the school committee to take topics off that are, that are called resolutions and and go on a different route, which would be to write directly to the president of the association and on behalf of the North Public Schools. We really think that this is the key issue that needs to be addressed or and so on and so forth. And, and then send it to your legislature, send it to the government and do what you did the last letter that you put out.
So, and I would say, everyone, you know, as, uh, sorry, MCAS, you know, the ones, uh, you know, many of them, I'm not a huge fan of dictating, uh, dictating speech like that. I, I think that gets us into a really tricky situation in general.
There's, there's, I went through them just for the sake of, you know, as I do every year. There, there were two that stuck out for me. Um, the alternative to MCAS, as you know, it's always been there. The other one that I think is important, President, the IDC, the full funding act, which is to, to.
Number which number is that?
Number three, number three. Uh, and that act is very dear to me, as you know, because of the idea of how special education is funded. Um, we're very big supporters of. No, we may not. However, uh, so that you know, the reason why this is a, maybe one that has something, is there is a bill right now uh, through the Special Education State Package, which the Superintendent Association and the, uh, the MTA and the, uh, um, American Federation of Teachers and, 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 and to take the extra cares money, about two hundred and seventy million dollars, instead of potentially returning it to the feds or using it somewhere else. It was geared towards education. It should go, it should be going out for those cases that are significant costs to district, the two fifty, three hundred thousand dollar basis. There's also a bill filed by Representative Powell, who represents, who represents, uh, parts of Norton that any, any student that out of district classes over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reimbursement to the district, including transportation, would be at ninety percent instead of the current seventy to seventy-five percent. So there is some flow here and that could potentially, with a resolution that's passed, get something. Because there's already information there. But again, you could take that and write to your representatives and write to your folks and say, we need your vote on this. And then hold them to that because we really don't know how our state senators and representatives vote. And that's not a knock on them. I'm not trying to, you know, attack them for that. I'm just saying, if we don't tell them on your behalf, the five of you as a vote, if you don't tell them how you think they should act on a piece of legislation, then more than likely, um, it, it's not seen in the same way.
Okay, so I'm assuming that this is going to be treated the same way that, that conference ends where if, if they don't have enough room for everybody, you can't, you can't have a school committee vote a Massachusetts without a representative from each one of the school committees. So I'm assuming that this is going to be virtual as well. So I don't mind throwing in here, but doing my laundry and everything else, but listening and voting.
It sounds like we're going to read your second at that.
Okay, I'll take that.
It sounds like we're going to go a different direction. Honestly, I, I think, I think we're, again, we're spinning over this. We're not really getting anywhere with this and I don't know why we continue to do it. You know, so, so yeah, I think, I think maybe thinking about what's more here to, to Norton itself, that's, that's really, you know, that's our job. My job is to worry about, um, all the, all the, you know, city loss. I, 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 I don't care. I'm, I'm, that's not my job. My job's not to care about.
So we, we can do some type of case and tell them to send it to the five of you where it's method and then send it to the official, but we think it should be sent.
I think so. That'd be good. I think that's a better route.
So we're looking at, um, like I said, uh, whatever ones you want, you can mail me. Just put letters together. On your behalf, keeping the rest.
You don't want to help. I mean, I think there's, there's a couple of areas we can't like. I don't even get this set up. Let's, let's move on. Let's just do, don't be careful. Okay. And everyone should be, maybe a standard practice for us is to whatever, twice a year, look at the education bills that are introduced. Send, send stuff to all the zones and say, hey, here's, here's what we care about. Here's what, here's how you better vote if you want to vote.
And quite honestly, too, I mean, at these conferences, there's a hundred and fifty, two hundred people in the room. There's never been a close vote. I don't think there's ever been a standing vote. It's, I mean, it's.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Any, any other discussion on this?
Sorry, we have to vote on it because you voted me in last time or?
Do you want us to vote you out?
Yeah, no, I would have done that time.
You got a no show down. It's great. Okay, um, so we're moving on. Okay. Uh, okay, that was the final, um, topic of our agenda. Other part of business.
Just want to, I, I just wanted, since I have the opportunity, um, that this goes out, uh, in a video, um, just want to, just make sure everybody understands the process for the code link of school. Um, because I think folks, um, at times don't know what goes into it. Um, unfortunately, this particular one, and I do apologize to both families and staff, it was a late call, but it's a late call based on information and how it was coming in. But typically, um, and I'll go out on a limb tomorrow from the weekly, um, newsletter that I sent out, it, it's, it's a step where, you know, started four fifteen in the morning, unless I'm guessing the night before. Those are my favorites for the record, for everybody. Um, but, um, we start at four fifteen in the morning, we get phone calls to the local officials. Wade and I have discussions, superintendent within the area, we all have discussions because we all have the same, like, problems, especially those of us as a suburban district, well, suburban districts. Um, and then we have the National Weather Service information from the town of Norton, as you know, resides here. So that's a critical one. We have a gentleman that we actually speak to, who works for them, who's actually a resident of one of the communities. We are a resident that gives us some real deep insight, which is great. We get back to another superintendent. Um, and then we, we make, we make the decision. So, you know, as, there's a sign in my office that basically has a big helmet, uh, hammer hitting me on this side of the head that says, you know, day off. And the other side says, you know, go to school. So it's fifty-fifty on your vote. But, uh, we do take it seriously. Um, I know that there are still some families that are out, um, this week. Um, we are, for tomorrow's, as far as we know, um, we had a good day today. We did have some students out at our, um, well, and have our informed staff about having some flexibility with the students that have been out, like the certain parts of town. Um, when I came into this meeting, we were finally under two thousand. Um, so that's, we're moving in the right direction. Uh, but I just want folks to kind of know that so that it's, it's, it is a process. It, it's a the most difficult decision that I make in terms of the day-to-day operations, um, is the weather. And to be quite honest, stating a snow day, if you will, an emergency day in October is not fun. This is the second year in a row we've had to do that. Um, and I can't think of the last thirteen years, so the prior eleven years as superintendent, having to make that call in October, except maybe a boiler at a school or something like that. So, um, so right now, we're off the sixteenth of June. We have a Friday left and, um, then we go to the following.
And Karen, just, just on the record, I, I one hundred percent agree with yesterday's call. Um, I myself was not able to get out of the street.
Right.
Going left was, was blocked. It was two or three streets down. Going right was about a hundred percent blocked. I mean, it, it's, you know, we've had this discussion when it comes to the land clearing of forecast. That's a little different. This is people come into school, you know, employees, staff, and everybody, you know, is a, you know, bottleneck.
Not to mention that if somebody has damage to their health, we don't upset you though.
It's the last thing on your mind, yes. You know, and I know like my kids were, were antsy last night. We didn't go today and we didn't go today. I was like, charge your car books with the generator and.
Or suppose a time rally.
I think it's important to people to know, I mean, that my child's in this district, so she, she knows ahead of time, I guess, but, um, it is a parental decision still. Every decision on its own, unless it's something illegal. The fact is, if, if you think you know it's not safe, you don't want to send a child to school. It's not an excuse absence, but we always make that work within the system because, you know, there was a situation on the road where you felt, could tell that something would drive that way. Parents, can you take kids off for vacation? If you really think it's unsafe, you can make that decision as well.
Just out of curiosity, is there a outage number that you look at to say, yeah, we're not having, I mean, I know we had two schools without power, so obviously they weren't going. Is there a number in town?
National Grid outage map is eight hundred four six five one two one two.
Thank you, Peter.
The, the contact, um, the number that I always, um, look at in terms of just the weather is when is the storm hitting during the evening into the morning, into the, everything's around the few hour, a, almost everything.
So it's not necessarily the amount of people that don't have power that is now.
I mean, we take that into consideration, but, um, you know, because we, we are known as a community that gets a lot of power. Um, so, and I can tell you, my hometown was almost a hundred percent and just got back this afternoon. So I've been on the generator since that phone call, um, that wake-up at four fifteen. So, um, there isn't a set number, but it's like anything else. We look at the data to say, okay, we think, and I'll give you an example. One of the key decisions about yesterday was, was outage, but the other real key decision was how dark it was going to be out for a bus pickup. That was concerning. Um, and that still happens today in certain areas. I know that, but, um, that was the big one. And then, I mean, most of the power outages in town actually happen after eight in the morning. Um, that's when we started to see all parts of town going out, the LGN side coming this way. The yell went out. I sent the staff home at eleven o'clock yesterday. It went out at ten.
Don't do that while it's later.
So, so that's the process. Christopher, let, let everybody know.
Thank you.
Yeah, that can also, historically, it's not a good year and we've had these types of things. You and I have been in contact, but a late at night, very early in the morning. I got lots of challenges with, with, and I just go further. And when I, when I get in contact, so, and not that I, I don't make the decisions and obviously the decisions. I find, I do tell my kids, they're my decision, like, when, when it was in school, right? And then when you say this, when the school is out, I'm like, no, that's Joe's decision. I can, I can tell by the way you did manage the violence today because you're still standing. So we were just mad.
I, I do have to say, I did take one credit at one time when we had no school after a Super Bowl. I looked at my kids and said, you're welcome.
That was one of the easiest calls I've ever had. If the guy says it's a bad day, the Patriots on and you're getting twelve inches, I can call it by four.
You do put, you put a lot of effort into it and it's appreciated. I know it's.
Yesterday was, yesterday was like awful, making that decision. And then it was Wade who actually said, he goes, boy, we got lucky on that one. And I said, yeah, huh? Because we were thinking we were coming in yesterday.
Check out the meeting at Math and so far, one thousand six customers without power in Norton.
All right. Do we have any other business before us? So, I would introduce a motion to adjourn. Uh, sorry, before we do that, um, let's see what's on next. Meeting is going to the Thursday, November eighteenth, right back here at the North Public Schools. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Second?
Second.
And we need hours of business. Yeah.
Yes.
This is done.
Yes.
Mr. Shute? Yes. And Mr. Sebastian is in here.